Always had a smile on his face. Always joking, always had a smile.
Yeah, such a nice kind.
Really wise.
Yeah, it is fair, absolutely right.
It's just too bad because it's a beautiful state. I mean, some parts of it are still, but it's just too bad.
They could put all those boats in off Hawaii and be even better.
Yeah, that's good.
They cleaned up Venice.
We're the longest minute.
It always is.
It's now 6:30. The July 20th work study session will come to order. Before we do the official reports, I just want to let council and the audience know that we will be holding a
... is our renewal request for the Parks and Recreation Millage. These funds have been very beneficial in updating our recreational equipment and facilities. Several of our parks have received major renovations as a result of this millage. In the next few weeks, we also look forward to opening our very first splash pad at Market Center Park as well as the Lions Park Dog Park. Unfortunately, the COVID years have slowed down our progress, delayed projects, and dramatically increased our costs. So, the work is not complete, and this millage renewal will help us continue our progress and improve the quality of life for our residents. Our Parks and Recreation Commission is taking a lead role in promoting this renewal, and I commend each of them for their efforts. You should start to see the yes to rec signs throughout our community. Again, this proposal is a millage renewal and not additional funding. I urge our residents to support the recreation proposal so that we can continue our efforts of updating our parks and recreational facilities. Every five years or so, the city updates our master plan. We are currently starting that process, which will take about three or four to five months to complete. Our planning commission will take the lead with assistance from our city planner, John Enos. Once complete, the plan will be presented to our city council. And congratulations to the owner and staff of Fudgie's Ice Cream Shop, which is just located across the highway here, or Dixie Highway from our municipal complex. They made it to the final round of WCSX's Game of Cones. It was a competition, and the contest involved voting for your favorite ice cream parlors throughout southeast Michigan. Each week shops were paired up, and one was eliminated. Fudgie made it to the final round this past week, but they were beat out by Vicky's Ice Cream in Redford. Coming in second, still had positive results, according to owner Alex Leonard, who appreciated everyone's support and all the good advertising. Free, by the way, but they were very prolific on that for all of the shops. And Fudgie's will still remain a Southgate favorite, and we thank them for entering the contest and all the positive attention the radio station competition provided our great city. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
No report this evening, thank you.
Mr. Treasurer?
No report.
Councilman Roush?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have just one thing. The Southgate seniors are having a Tiger Party. It is on August 11th. The doors will open at noon. The game will be at 1:15, so you're obviously watching the Tiger baseball game. It's at Parkside Gardens Banquet Hall. It's $5 per person. That will include a hot dog, chips, and pop or water. They are also having raffle baskets, and from what I understand, there's some really nice baskets. There's a silent auction. They'll have cornhole for people to play. You can get your tickets by calling Diane at the senior center at 734-258-3066. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Graziani?
The Board of Zoning Appeals met last week to review a dimensional ordinance or dimensional variance requested by the Southgate Arby's on Eureka Road near Ford Street. The request was primarily based on issues with safety related to their drive-through setup. The board granted the variance in its entirety with some contingencies, but the main take with the variance approval is that the Arby's and the Southgate Arby's on Eureka near Ford Street will completely remodeling the property. So, that's something to look forward to in the near future. I don't think there are any specific dates associated with that remodeling. Maybe Mr. Marsh could provide some. I don't know. I don't think they identified any at the meeting, but that's up for grabs. I'll provide an update at that point.
Thank you. I will be hosting a cleanup event in Southgate, spruce up Southgate. It'll be the Southgate streetscapes along Eureka Road. It'll be this Saturday, starting at 10 o'clock. The meeting place will be Fort Street on Eureka, and we hope to move all the way down Eureka, depending on how many volunteers we have. Councilman Klowis.
Thank you. The first, my deepest sympathy to councilperson Karen George on the loss of her husband, Mike. Mike, certainly everybody knows, was a great guy and always had a smile on his face and was just a really good-natured person. And he always in a good mood, and he will be missed dearly. We always, Julie and I really enjoyed his company at events. The and the planning commission, they had their meeting recently. Jim, excuse me, Mills Gymnastics on Reek Road was approved for a children outside place keep activity center. The center will be properly supervised and fenced in. There was also a second agenda item, and it'll be on tonight's agenda. The planning commission recommended a rezoning to allow new use at the current Michigan Vehicle Solutions on Ford Street. The new business is going to be Dent Wizard, and there'll be no modifications to the outside of the structures, just some modifications inside. Rich Oliver, who certainly has been with the city for a long time, 10, 12 years, has done a great job and very proud to have him as a business owner. He's improved the city in that area, what he's done over the years. I don't know if we're going to approve it tonight because we don't want to lose you, Rich, but we probably will. So, I wish you the very best. He's in our audience tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Farah?
I have no report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman George?
No report. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the agenda items. Mr. Marsh?
Thank you, Madam President. On our agenda tonight, under Communications A, the first item is that we have a letter from our labor attorney requesting approval for the retention of an attorney from Miller Canfield for the lawsuit John and Colleen O'Donnell versus the City of Southgate. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none. Item number two is a memo regarding the conditional rezoning of 16600 Ford Street. This is the current site of the Michigan Vehicle Solutions and the proposed site for Dent Wizard. You, as mentioned, you can see in your packets that this was, the conditional rezoning was requested by the planning commission. I will also say that tonight we do have here with us Mr. Saad from Dent Wizard and Mr. Oliver, the current landowner. If there are any questions, they are available tonight to answer any of those. Does the council have any questions for myself, Mr. Saad, or Mr. Oliver?
Chair.
Councilman Graziani?
How are you approaching the O'Donnell letter with regard to Miller Canfield? I see the letter in here in the communications, but I'm wondering how is that discussed?
Shh, oh lord.
We've got more than a minute this time.
Yes.
This is our yoga class here, so.
That's right. There's a chance to run over for.
The answers go to Fudge.
Actually, don't they have like Uber Eats? If we order them now, if we order 12 milkshakes, by the time this meeting's over, they'll probably have them.
There you go. Wasn't it National Ice Cream Day or something recently?
I think it was supposedly.
Every day's National something day.
I think it's National Ice Cream Month.
Oh, was it? Okay, alright.
I think I read that.
I have no problem celebrating that.
Are taking it every day.
That's right, that's right.
Oops.
I'll even support local vendors.
Now we get serious.
Yeah, because of fire. As the horses all line up. They're off. Post time? Right.
Said there's a big rainstorm in Lincoln Park.
Never rains in South.
It rains and sun always shines and shines in South.
It's now seven o'clock, the July 20th regular meeting will come to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Councilman Karen George's husband, Mike George. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilman Zemeckis excused. Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Roush?
Here.
Councilman Caspa?
Here.
Councilman Graziani?
Present.
Councilman Clovis?
Present.
Councilman Farah?
Present.
I need a motion to approve the work-study session minutes dated July 6, 2022.
Chairman.
Councilman Clovis?
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve the work-study session minutes dated July 6, 2022.
Support.
Motion by Clovis, supported by Roush. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. A motion is required to approve the regular city council meeting minutes dated July 6, 2022.
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush?
I make a motion we approve the regular city council meeting dated July 6, 2022.
Support.
Motion by Roush, supported by Farah. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. We have one scheduled person in the audience, Houston James. If you want to come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My address, I'm Houston James, and my address is 28442 Dawn Ridge Drive, which is in Flat Rock, Michigan. I'm running for state senate in the newly drawn 4th district, state senate. So, and I was encouraged to get involved as a young person, worried about the direction of our nation, particularly the divisive nature of our current political system. And I hope to step forward, make an impact, and adequately meet the needs of all the great citizens in the 4th senate district. So, thank you to the council for having me here tonight, and I will be staying after, after to speak with people and answer any questions that they may have. So, thank you.
Thank you. There are no consideration of bids, there's no scheduled hearings. The first item under Communication A is a letter from the city attorney regarding John and Colleen O'Donnell versus City of Southgate, Wayne County Circuit case, court case number 2022-0077854, Madam Clerk.
On Monday, July 11, 2022, the City of Southgate received a summons and complaint on behalf of the above-captured plaintiffs alleging that the city is improperly applying the Act 345 tax levy to cover costs associated with post-retirement healthcare benefits for retired police and firefighters. This lawsuit is one of a series of lawsuits that has been filed amongst Act 345 communities in the state of Michigan, including locally the cities of Taylor, Dearborn Heights, Westland, and St. Clair Shores, among others. The City of Southgate, like many other Act 345 communities, has used levies from the Act 345 retirement system to provide costs associated with retirement healthcare since approximately the late 1980s. The lawsuit contends that the costs associated with the retirement systems are not authorized pursuant to the Headley Amendment, among other theories. This cause of action is not covered by the City of Southgate's Michigan Municipal League Liability Insurance Pool. As a result of the lawsuit and potential risk of the city's fiscal systems, we are recommending that the City of Southgate City Council approve a retention with the Miller Canfield Law Firm, who will assign principal Sony Mathani to represent the City of Southgate in this litigation. Ms. Mathani is a partner in the law firm of Miller Canfield, and she was recommended by the Michigan Municipal League General Counsel, Chris Johnson, as an expert in dealing with Headley Amendment challenges, as well as numerous rate cases involving plaintiffs' law firm. Our office will assist Ms. Mathani in preparation of litigation to maintain an economical representation for the City of Southgate. The Finance Director and I are recommending that the city council engage the Miller Canfield Law Firm at a rate of $325 per hour for partner, $225 for an associate, and $170 per hour for legal assistance to represent the City of Southgate in the above-captured lawsuit. We are recommending an initial legal budgetary cap of $35,000. In the event the case exceeds that amount, we will appear before city council to discuss.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam Chair, I just want, I failed to mention this earlier, and I'm sorry to interrupt, just to let council know that I'll be writing along with my name on the appearance and participate in the hearings, and you know that I'm here on retainer to the community, no additional charge, and I'll keep you abreast of things as they develop. But I will be in the court in the hearings when they proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Clovis?
Thank you. I make a motion that we adopt the recommendation of our attorney, Brandon Forney, and also the Finance Director, that the City of Southgate engage, engage the law firm of Miller Canfield at a rate of $325 per hour for partner, $225 for an associate, $170 per hour for legal assistance to represent the City of Southgate in the above-captured lawsuit, that being John and Colleen O'Donnell versus City of Southgate. And that there'll be a budgetary cap of $35,000. In the event it's going to go over that, that they will appear the law firm for additional funds before they do any further work. Thank you.
Support.
Motion by Clovis, supported by Farah. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Second is a memo from the Billing Director, Director regarding conditional rezoning, 16600 Fort Street, Madam Clerk.
Southgate Planning Commission recommends the city council approve a conditional rezoning from C2 General Business to M1 Light Industrial at 16600 Fort Street. Currently, Michigan Vehicle Solutions will be Dent Wizard.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Farah.
I move this council to agree with the Planning Commission and conditionally rezone 16600 Fort Street from C2 General Business to M1 Light Industrial.
Support.
Motion by Farah, supported by Roush. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Third is a letter from the mayor regarding a purchase of network switches, Madam Clerk.
It is recommended by the Public Safety Director, and I concur with his recommendation, to award this purchase to CDWG of Vernon Hills, Illinois, in the, in the amount of $5,775.70. Three quotes were received to purchase Unifi 48 switch pro po network switches. CDWG was the lowest bidder and therefore is in the best interests of the city. Adequate funds are available in the federal forfeiture account for this contract. Your favorable consideration of this matter is greatly appreciated.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Farah.
I move this council waive the bid and award the purchase of network switches, Unifi 48 switch pro po to CDWG Vernon Hills, Illinois, in the amount of $5,775.70.
Support.
Motion by Farah, supported by Clovis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Last is a memo from the Administrator regarding DUO resolution, Madam Clerk.
Attached is a resolution that DUO has circulated among the 13 communities to take to their respective councils. This is a resolution requesting that Wayne County contribute some of their ARPA funding to DUO specifically for the replacement of the outdated UV system. DUO is asking that all 13 communities councils deliver approved resolutions as part of our request to Wayne County.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion, we concur with the administration and the DUO resolution, along with the other 13 communities.
Support.
Motion by Roush, supported by Farah. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. There's one item under Communications B, a memo from the Administrator regarding the librarian contract, Madam Clerk.
The City of Southgate has entered into a new contract with Don Priest, the librarian. Attached is the contract for your review.
Pleasure of the council?
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion we receive and file.
Support.
Motion by Roush, supported by Farah. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. There's no ordinances. Is there any old business the council would like to discuss? Seeing none, is there any new businesses council would like to discuss? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to unscheduled persons in the audience. If you would like to address the council, please do. Please state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes to address the council.
My name is Ronald Kokenda. My address is 10475 Belfour Avenue in Allen Park, Michigan. I'm running for state representative for the new 2nd district, which includes Lincoln Park, Allen Park, Ekorse, and the northern four precincts here in Southgate, precincts 1, 9, 10, and 11. I'm running in the Republican Party primary. I have one opponent there. I would say, I don't want to campaign, but I would say that my primary focus would be on a distinction between central banking and national banking as it relates to getting us out of this economic crisis that we're in. And if you see my name, I hope you come back to that distinction, central banking versus national banking. We've been successful twice in our nation's history through national banking. One was Hamilton, the first national bank, and then there was a second national bank. We did very well into the 1830s. The second national bank was ended, and we suffered until Lincoln and his Greenback policy. And there was a tremendous advancement during that period of time in terms of infrastructure building, agriculture development, industrial development. FDR did a workaround, but he was working under the central banking system. He did a workaround with the Reconstruction Finance Corporation. So, when he had the gentleman from General Motors that went around the country getting things in place for the war mobilization, he had the RFC behind him that could put the credit forward for their retooling operations to get ready for the war production period. The distinction is basically one of.
Madam Chair, just make a point of order on behalf, as the Parliament, Aaron here, he's exceeded his two minutes. However, it's beyond the scope of municipal matters, and it got into a point of, they will have educational seminars at the library, you can present that, but at the council meeting here, it's just for municipal business.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, yep. Are there any other unscheduled, please come up to the podium and state your name and address. You will have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Robert Palowski, and I live at 12757 Chestnut Street in Southgate, born and raised. So, I want to take a minute to talk about the Parks and Recreation Village in front of council during our work-study session. I just want to show my support that we need to vote yes on this, especially the talk and the investment with the splash pad. I think that's really beneficial to the community. You know, River Rouge implemented theirs at Memorial Park right off of Jefferson, and then also in Riverview, right by one of the elementary schools off of Ford Street. It's a really great investment. It brings people into the community, and it also brings more revenue, and also, you know, more people to come to the city, not even residents, non-residents, you know, friendly gatherings, you know, family reunions. You know, we need to keep that here in Southgate, so I encourage everyone to vote yes on the Parks and Recreation Village. Also, I want to make one more point regarding council president's event this Saturday. Thank you for putting that out there. I actually do a lot of cleanup myself here in Southgate with three different bus stops. I'm an adopt-to-stop partner with Smart. And I also clean up two shelters, one in front of Arcade Corporation on Eureka Road, one in front of the old Taco Bell, which is currently being remodeled at Eureka Road in Trenton, and also the stop on the southbound side right by Twin Peaks. And I usually keep that in tip-top shape because a lot of people come here and they trash it. But I try to keep it in tip-top shape, so, I mean, unfortunately, I will not be in town to attend, but if you have any more events like this, I really would like to help you out and continue to keep Southgate green. But as always, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Robert. Are there, are there any other people in the audience that would like to? Please come up, state your name and address, and you have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, Council members. Darren Kimmellary, State Representative for much of Downriver, and candidate for state senate for here in Southgate. I really just want to give you a short update on the state budget. The governor did sign her budget today, a historic state budget over $75 billion, including a 6% revenue share increase for local communities like the City of Southgate, which I'm very excited about. It's one of the top, you know, issues that I hear from all of you as local elected officials, that we need to see more revenue coming from Lansing down to the local level to solve our local infrastructure, as well as other community issues. So, we're excited to have that increase. Also, from the educational perspective, we are at historic level of funding for our public schools, $9,150 per pupil, which is a $450 per pupil increase in this budget. As a former teacher, that means a lot to me, and I know it means a lot to our families. Additionally, we will see millions of dollars in mental health support so that schools can hire counselors and local assistants for our kids, as well as school safety grants, millions of dollars for Southgate schools for that as well. We're very excited about this historic budget, and we're going to see huge, huge improvements in our communities because of it. The last thing I'll mention, and I'd love to hear your input offline about this, but if any members of the community or members of council have Southgate issues that we want to continue to push for in terms of funding, we left $7 billion on the table to spend in Lansing. Seven billion. So, yeah, I hear Councilor Zalnag might want some of that here in Southgate. We're very excited about that.
Settle for six.
What's that? You'll settle for six billion? Yeah, excellent, excellent. But we still have a lot of decisions to. What's that? You'll settle for six billion? Yeah, excellent, excellent. But we still have a lot of decisions to make in Lansing when it comes to that funding. Some of it might be tax relief potentially, but I'm hoping, hoping it'll all become infrastructure. So, good to see all of you again, and just happy to be here.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Representative Camilleri, the, the board just passed hiring an attorney in regards to three forty, Act three forty-five issue. I'm going to suggest to you that the senate and the house can correct that by, by amending the law, or at least clarifying the law, to allow communities to use those funds for retiree health care through this mechanism. It's, it's police and fire oriented, it's public safety oriented, and would save communities a heck of a lot of money in attorney fees to defend something we've been doing since the nineteen nineties. So, just to, just to suggest that to you as an active member of our legislature, that it really could be solved simply by the legislature saying that, no, the interpretation of the law is such in clarifying the fact that these expenses directly related to retirees in our public safety departments can get this benefit through Act three forty-five.
Great. I'll, I'll follow up with you afterwards, and would love to talk more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there, are there any other people that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to claims and accounts. Councilman Graziani?
I move this council approve Warren fourteen fifty-three in the amount of two million one hundred and three thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and two cents.
Support.
Motion by Graziani, supported by Roush. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chairperson.
Councilman Clovis.
Motion to adjourn. Support.
Motion by Clovis, supported by Roush. Any discussion? Any objection? We're adjourned.